Thank you very much. At this time, I'll call this meeting to order for the regular meeting agenda. Clerk of the Board, please call the roll.
Commissioner Baker.
Here.
Commissioner Bodak.
Here.
Commissioner Garrettson.
Here.
Commissioner Kowalski.
Here.
Commissioner Leon.
Here.
Commissioner Mirabella.
Present.
Commissioner present. Uh. Please.
[laughing]. Here.
You got that?
Commissioner Williams.
Here.
I was thinking present because you were the... Sorry. Vice Chairwoman Palmieri Mudead.
Here.
And Chairman Granados.
Here.
Chairman, you have nine commissioners present for this evening's regular meeting.
Thank you very much. Clerk of the Board, please adjourn the prayer and salute to the flag.
Humbly we ask God, the giver of peace and the lover of charity, to give the entire family of nations true agreement with his will and to grant the light of his spirit on all who work for justice and peace.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk of the Board, please read the Statement of Compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act.
The Chair wishes to announce that pursuant to the requirements of the New Jersey statutes annotated Title 10, Chapter 4, Section 10 of the Open Public Meetings Act, an aggregate notice of this meeting and the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Union has been given by mailing the annual meeting schedule for the year 2023, along with periodic changes necessitated by circumstance to the newspapers circulating within the County of Union who are designated to receive such notice, and by posting the annual meeting schedule for the year 2023 in the administration building, and further by filing the annual meeting schedule for the year 2023 with the Office of the County Clerk.
Thank you very much. May I have a motion to approve the communications?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
May I have a second?
Second.
Motion is made by Commissioner Mirabella, seconded by Commissioner Dr. Angela Garrettson. Clerk of the Board, please call the roll.
Commissioner Baker.
Um, excuse me. What?
Communications. Communications.
Oh. All right.
Commissioner Bodak.
Yes.
Commissioner Garrettson.
Yes.
Commissioner Kowalski.
Yes.
Commissioner Leon.
Aye.
Commissioner Mirabella.
Aye.
Commissioner Williams.
Aye.
Vice Chairwoman Palmieri Mudead.
Aye.
And Chairman Granados.
Aye.
Chairman, you have nine votes in the affirmative for all communications.
Thank you very much. May I have a motion to approve the July 13 minutes?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
Motion is made by Commissioner Bodak, seconded by Commissioner Leon. Clerk of the Board, please call the roll.
Commissioner Baker.
Aye.
Commissioner Bodak.
Yes.
Commissioner Garrettson.
Yes.
Commissioner Kowalski.
Abstain.
Commissioner Leon.
Aye.
Commissioner Mirabella.
Aye.
Commissioner Williams.
Aye.
Vice Chairwoman Palmieri Mudead.
Aye.
Chairman Granados.
Aye.
Chairman, you have eight votes in the affirmative with one abstention on the July minutes.
Thank you very much. Today, we have two ordinances for final reading and adoption. Clerk of the Board, please read the first ordinance by title.
Ordinance number 844-2023, bond ordinance to authorize the making of various public improvements and the acquisition of new additional or replacement equipment and machinery, new additional furnishings, new communication and signal systems equipment, new information technology and telecommunications equipment, and new automotive vehicles, including original apparatus and equipment in, by, and for the County of Union, State of New Jersey, to appropriate the sum of $57,586,882 to pay the cost thereof, to appropriate state grants, to make a down payment, to authorize the issuance of $46,196,196 of bonds to finance such appropriation, and to provide for the issuance of $46,196,196 of the bond anticipation notes in anticipation of the issuance of such bonds.
Thank you very much. At this time, I'll open the meeting to the public for the purpose on commenting on ordinance 844-2023 only. Kindly state your name and town of residence for the record and adhere to the five-minute time limit.
Maria Ettraria from Elizabeth. Can you just give me a breakdown on exactly what all those millions of dollars is for? Okay, thank you.
Good evening, Chair, ladies and gentlemen of the Board and Dr. Garrettson. Also, just some simple questions. One is, there's $350,000 in there for a rolling stage. I'm just wondering, are you retiring the existing stage? And if not, why are you buying another one? This $46 million, is this being accrued to our debt? Or is there some bonding coming off that's maturing to offset this $46 million? And a third question, what is the total debt that the county taxpayers are carrying? Thank you.
Anyone else? Director Taylor?
Well, the Director Taylor is on her way up. The first question, the stage is many years old, so this would be a replacement, and we'll have a second stage that's older as needed.
Through you, Chairman. So, the multi-purpose bond ordinance supports capital improvements for all of the departments throughout the county, our vocational, technical schools, as well as the Union County College. More importantly, while we are authorizing debt in the amount of $46.1 million, we are also paying down $52.2 million in principal, which is allocated and appropriated in the 2023 budget, and those answers all of the questions posed this evening.
Thank you very much, Director Taylor.
Director Taylor, one more question. How many years in a row have we paid down more debt than we borrowed?
That would be six years in a row, sir.
That's fabulous, thank you.
You're welcome.
Bob.
My apologies. Through you, Chairman. The total debt, according to our supplemental debt statement, as far as the equalized assessed value, we are at .631% of our total equalized assessed value. In accordance with the State of New Jersey, we are allowed up to 2%, so we are well below our statutory debt limit. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Director Taylor, appreciate it. Seeing no one else, I'll formally close this portion of the meeting and ask fiscal Subcommittee Chairwoman Palmieri Mudead to move ordinance 844-2023.
Thank you, Chair. I will move ordinance number 844-2023 for final reading and authorize the Clerk of the Board to advertise same in accordance with the law.
May I have a second?
Second.
Motion is made by Vice Chairwoman Palmieri Mudead, seconded by Commissioner Mirabella. Clerk of the Board, please call the roll.
Commissioner Baker.
Aye.
Commissioner Bodak.
Yes.
Commissioner Garrettson.
Yes.
Commissioner Kowalski.
Yes.
Commissioner Leon.
Aye.
Commissioner Mirabella.
Aye.
Commissioner Williams.
Aye.
Vice Chairwoman Palmieri Mudead.
Aye.
And Chairman Granados.
Aye.
Chairman, you have nine votes in the affirmative on ordinance number 844-2023.
Thank you very much. Clerk of the Board, please read the second ordinance by title.
Ordinance number 845-2023, bond ordinance to amend the following bond ordinance is previously adopted by the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Union, State of New Jersey. One, bond ordinance number 687-2009, adopted on July 30, 2009, as previously amended by the following five ordinances. Bond ordinance number 699-2010, adopted on February 11, 2010. Bond ordinance number 703-2010, adopted on May 13, 2010. Bond ordinance number 714-2010, adopted on December 8, 2010. Bond ordinance number 741-2012, adopted on September 13, 2012. And bond ordinance number 760-2014, adopted on October 9, 2014. Two, bond ordinance number 723-2011, adopted on August 25, 2011, as previously amended by bond ordinance number 741-2012, adopted on September 13, 2012. And bond ordinance number 760-2014, adopted on October 9, 2014. Three, bond ordinance number 740-2012, adopted on September 13, 2012, as previously amended by bond ordinance number 760-2014, adopted on October 9, 2014. And bond ordinance number 786-2017, adopted on August 17, 2017. Four, bond ordinance number 787-2017, adopted on August 17, 2017, as previously amended by bond ordinance number 805-2019, adopted on February 14, 2019. Five, bond ordinance number 795-2018, adopted on September 13, 2018. Six, bond ordinance number 808-2019, adopted on July 25, 2019, as previously amended by bond ordinance number 825-2021, adopted on March 25, 2021. Seven, bond ordinance number 820-2020, adopted on November 5, 2020. Eight, bond ordinance number 834-2021, adopted on December 2, 2021. And nine, bond ordinance number 839-2022, adopted on October 6, 2022.
Thank you very much. At this time, I'll open the meeting to the public for the purpose on commenting on ordinance 845-2023 only.
Good evening, Chair Granados, ladies and gentlemen of the Board, and Dr. Garrettson, Bruce Patterson Garwood. As our eyes all glazed over to Mr. Paul Tier's reading.
Come on.
I... God bless you that you made it through. I don't think you made an error, so God bless you. But anyway, uh, yeah, there should be clapping. The, uh, I guess, what is the end game of all this? That's question number one. And question number two, looking at all this word salad, under item number one, it mentions a bond ordinance number 760-2014, adopted on October 9, 2014. And later on, under item number three, it mentions the same bond ordinance, number 760-214, adopted on October 9, 2014. So, I mean, why do we see like, and there may be others, I don't know, that's the first one that caught my eye. But anyway, why are there these double use of the same bond ordinance? So, that's it. Thank you very much.
Anyone else?
You noticed certain things. Maria Ettraria, Elizabeth. Yeah, can yous break this down like I'm a five-year-old? Because this was very confusing to listen to that. Yous are amending so many ordinances. I mean, can yous print out the original ordinances and to the newest ones and how they like changed throughout the years? Because I'm assuming this is not the first time they've done that. Thank you.
Can I mention?
Sure. Director Taylor comes up to ask the answer to specific questions. This is a repurposing of old capital that we do every year. There's projects that no longer go forward or have money left over, so we repurpose the old capital for current projects that are needed instead of bonding again and putting the county in increasing our debt. Director?
Through you, Chairman. Consistent with the county manager's explanation, the multi... the repurposing ordinance is just that. We are repurposing several ordinances, nine, actually nine ordinances. As a result of this action, we are utilizing those nine ordinances to repurpose $7.9 million for various purposes as we've just... that the ordinance allows for, because projects have been concluded, and instead of authorizing new debt, we're using existing authorizations for purposes that departments have established to continue with their operations. That's exactly what it means. And ordinances have several sections. That's why you'll see one ordinance referenced several times, because we're amending different sections within an ordinance.
Thank you very much, Director Taylor. Seeing no one else, I'll formally close this portion of the meeting and ask fiscal Subcommittee Chairwoman Palmieri Mudead to move ordinance 845-2023.
Thank you, Chair. I will move ordinance number 845-2023 for final reading and authorize the Clerk of the Board to advertise same in accordance with the law.
I'll second, Chairman.
Thank you very much. Motion is made by Vice Chairwoman Palmieri Mudead, seconded by Commissioner Kowalski. Clerk of the Board, please call the roll.
Commissioner Baker.
Aye.
Commissioner Bodak.
Yes.
Commissioner Garrettson.
Yes.
Commissioner Kowalski.
Yes.
Commissioner Leon.
Aye.
Commissioner Mirabella.
Aye.
Commissioner Williams.
Aye.
Vice Chairwoman Palmieri Mudead.
Aye.
And Chairman Granados.
Aye.
Chairman, let the record reflect you. Nine votes in the affirmative on ordinance number 845-2023.
Thank you very much. The meeting is now open to the public for the purpose on commenting on resolutions being offered for adoption, and if there are any governmental issue that a member of the public feels may be of concern, kindly state your name and town of residence for the record, and if speaking on a resolution on the agenda, please note the resolution number to which you're referring and adhere to the five-minute time limit.
Maria Ettraria, Elizabeth. Before we get to resolutions, because there's certain parts in there, but, okay, I happen to see last meetings and your comments regarding Bruce Patterson and his integrity, like have any of yous questioned your integrity? I've, I mean, when, from the beginning I started coming here, all he does is question about the money, okay? And as a taxpayer, he has the right to, because billions of dollars get thrown out on I don't know what, okay? And he's been here then, more, longer than like half of yous at least that I remember of. And maybe I have to remind yous, okay? I was here for your reorganization, okay? Now, Mirabella, maybe you don't remember this, but I'm going to tell you, okay? In between the breaks of everybody mingling along, when it's time to go back to everybody's seats, you bum rushed right through me, like I wasn't even there, like you couldn't see me, and I know I'm noticeable, okay? I found that that was very rude. Not, not one time did the word "excuse me" come out of your mouth when you were bum rushing through me.
You talking about January when this happened?
Reorganization meeting.
Okay.
Okay. Like I said, maybe it was in the mingling and everybody, but I know I'm a noticeable person, so there's no way that you did not like kind of see me bum rushing through me, okay? Okay. So that's that. I think they need to fix their internet with so much whatever. Okay, I was reapplying for my Medicaid, okay? Tried to do it online. Your, whatever, it wouldn't accept that I didn't want to put down my race, okay? It, it wouldn't accept that I was even, that I put down that I'm even Cuban. Nothing wouldn't, wouldn't accept it. It wouldn't accept anything, okay? From not, prefer not to answer, anything. Then, so I had to come into the office, because I called here, I got ahold of somebody over there, and I had to go in. That place in there, you guys got to do something about that building. It's been a long time since I've been in that building. When are you guys going to change that bathroom in the welfare in Elizabeth? Okay? Change that bathroom. That bathroom has been like that since God knows how long, okay? Like, it's a shame, okay? What else? Then I tried to go and I joined that line to apply for the SNAP, okay? Guys got to do something with that place, okay? I get to the front, to window one, to apply for my food stamps, okay? Haven't had it in years, but you know, it's tight. It's tight out there. Okay. And now, they tell me just go online. Why couldn't anybody but somebody else that was in this, in, in the same office, they give them the paper? Why can't they give me a hard copy of an application when they know people like me have a hard time doing anything online? Not everybody is electronically inclined. I called the hotline, okay? They said it takes about a month for it to come in through the mail. Can someone expedite that or something, or make sure that it actually comes in the mail? Because you go and wait for hours on this line, okay? And it's crazy. Maybe you guys don't know the experience of do... Oh, and then one of these about your, your food places. I went with somebody to go get food. They didn't have an ID, I have an ID. Why do they scan IDs? Do you know how much identity theft is out there over scanning IDs? Why do they not just look at an ID to verify you're the person and you live in the county or whatever the case is? I don't think that my ID needs to get scanned, okay? Because there are, there's information, you could pull up people's social security numbers off of scanning IDs, and they didn't even deny it. They were like, well, we asked you for that anyway. But, identity theft is, is like the number one, okay? That's it. Thank you. Yeah, Bruce, I didn't like how they...
Good evening, Chair Granados, ladies and gentlemen of the Board, and Dr. Garrettson, Bruce Patterson Garwood, New Jersey. Some questions on the Reso's. Reso 773 is Sage Landscape Contractors for Snow Removal Services, $190,000. The question is, what are the unit prices he charges when he's called? And, and it's $95,000 the winter season, obviously. 776 is Ben Schaefer Recreation Inc., playground equipment, this was asked before, the additional amount of $243,000. And the question is, why are you increasing this contract by 60%? If it's for a new hillside park, then the balance really should be going out to public bid, not just giving him a 10, 20% overhead and profit on top of a change order. 782 to 787 is modifying the Union County budget, totaling over $1.4 million in this... and I noticed in the newspaper that, that Senator Scutari has given us another $57 million. The question is, this $57 million, is this going to show up much like modifying the budget like these other ones are? And also, part of it is $25 million for VOTEC, who was here today, and, and, you know, it's great to have $25 million, but, but as Commissioner Mirabella said, they didn't even know what the $25 million is for. So, I mean, to me, it sounds like it's just a money grab and a taxpayer ripoff, and if you're receiving $25 million, why don't you use it for possibly the Route 22 Bridge Overpass? Sounds like that would probably cover it, or even towards the Union County Complex bid, whenever that is, because that's going to be very expensive. I've mentioned that before. Reso 808 is congratulating Joe Graciano for his 17 years of service to the county, and, and I don't think he's here today, but I just want to say thank you, Joe, for your service. You handled the position pretty well. There's many emergencies over the years, and, and he, when he gave his reports, it sounded like, you know, he was handling every emergency as a top-notch. Of course, there was that Neil Palmieri fiasco, and there were other items, but, you know, there's always a couple of bumps expected in any job, so I wish Joe good luck, and maybe he and I can get together to talk someday about the county.
He would like that.
General comments, you know, I have to apologize to Commissioner Granados' last meeting. You know, I did mention about his family being on the payroll, there was four of them, maybe there's even more, I haven't tracked it. But to tell you the truth, I mean, and I, it's, it's really a lightweight thing that you're doing. I mean, if you, if you really want to game the system, you got to follow Commissioner Mirabella. I mean, he's the senior commissioner here, and I'll tell you, he knows how to game the system. I mean, he, he got a patronage job back in 2015, $160,000. He's now making about $175,000, along with the $30,000 commissioner salary, so he's making well over $200,000. Actually, and then he gets his wife, who was, who was basically pushing papers in a real estate office, you know, all of a sudden she became a director of communication in Uni County College, and now she moved over to Kane College as an assistant vice president of administration. So, I mean, it's just amazing when you have contacts, political contacts, you know, you just climb the ladder. So, right now, his family is making over $300,000. Commissioner Mirabella, as I mentioned before, he was able to game the system from his $15,000 pension to now well over $100,000. I'll tell you, this, this county and the politically connected, amazing. And, and then it comes out in the newspaper that he's, he's being appointed, he's, he's becoming appointed to the National Association of Counties. Now, that's a prestigious role, I guess, but I'll tell you, you know, New Jersey, the way it is, you got to really question about that. But anyway, he's now into the, assuming a role, this is a newspaper article, assuming the role within the Finance and Pension Intergovernmental Affairs Steering Committee. And I'll tell you, if he knows about pensions, what he's doing for his family, boy, he'll really add a lot. The sad part is, you know, we talked about integrity last week, and obviously we brought it up this week. I mean, the respect, there's, there's rarely any respect to the taxpayers and the expenditures that are going on here.
Bruce Patterson, thank you.
You're welcome. Have a nice day.
County Manager?
Sure. Excuse me. For... 676, the increase for Ben Schaefer, it is a, on a co-op, so nobody's handing anybody money. This is a, this public bid, a co-op, is to complete the park project. That is why the increase is there. That's what it costs to fully fund new equipment at that park. Thank you.
773, County Engineer, please.
Thank you, Chair. This is a breakdown of an hourly rate for a truck and a driver. The contract has already been in place for two years. It's an extension for another two years, so it's actually spread over a four-year period.
Thank you very much. Seeing no one else, I'll formally close this por... Oh. Oh, okay.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Al Walco from Roselle Park, New Jersey. First of all, thank you for recognizing our nonprofit organization, Union County Connects, but I wanted to talk about something that happened on August 23 in Morinanco Park. The county had their first Latin concert with a band called Afro Domenicano. It was well attended, and it was great, and I encourage the county to continue that series in that park because it was really great. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments.
Good evening, Mr. Chair and Board of Commissioners, former Commissioner Bergen, who I know. My name is Jaleen Donovan. I'm the Executive Director of Family Promise located here in Union County. And this is a long overdue that I come to you and just want to say thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you for supporting our shelter diversion program. Back in 2019, Debbie Ann Anderson and Karen Dinsmore came to you with my crazy idea of starting a pilot program for shelter diversion, which is what it sounds like when people are knocking on our door for emergency shelter. We try to divert them from shelter, divert them from homelessness. So, you've supported this program now. We're in our fifth year, and I, and I'm really so happy to tell you that we have diverted shelter and homelessness for 200 families with this funding that you have given to us. And one more thing that I wanted to say is that in order to do shelter diversion successfully, you really need a robust housing stock. And as you all know, there's not much out there right now with that. We, we have a problem with affordability, accessibility, habitability. All of those issues are really keeping people from finding housing. So, at Family Promise, we, we know these things. We know that's bad. We've gone through a pandemic, eviction moratorium. We lost our whole facility during Ida. I don't know how many of you know that. We lost everything, and we don't let it get us down. We never miss a day of work. We never miss providing services to people, not one single day. So, now, we say to ourselves, to know is not enough. We have to do something to create housing. So, we have a network of 41 congregations in Union County and across the country, because our, our headquarters are located here in Union County in Summit, and we're partnering with them to repurpose their unused buildings and space to produce low-income housing. And we have one project that's completed for three units in New Providence with St. Andrews, and we're undergoing other projects. And another project underway is a 42 unit in New Providence. And I think that more of us in the nonprofit world should just dive in, learn how to do this, and I wanted to tell you that that's what we're doing, because it's really hard to find housing, so now we're going to create it too. And I thank you for supporting us with the shelter diversion program. Thank you.
Thank you for your leadership and all the work Family Promise does for our county. Thank you. All right, seeing no one else, I will formally close this portion of the meeting and ask for a motion to adopt... and ask for a motion to adopt Resolutions 2023-769 through 2023-809.
So move, Ms. Chairman.
Second.
Motion was made by Commissioner Mirabella, seconded by Commissioner Williams. Call to the board, please call the roll.
Commissioner?
Commissioner Baker?
Aye.
Commissioner Bodak?
Yes.
Commissioner Garrettson?
Yes.
Commissioner Kowalski?
Yes.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Mirabella?
Aye.
Commissioner Williams?
Aye.
Vice Chairwoman, Mary Muddad?
Aye.
Chairman Granados?
Aye.
Chairman, you have nine votes in affirmative on all resolutions.
Thank you very much. With that said, we'll move on to Commissioner Reports and Comments. And I'll start with Commissioner Kowalski.
Thank you, Chair. I'd just like to start by thanking the Real Trail Conservancy Group and Family Promise. And also, my colleague, Commissioner Mirabella, for the great work he's done over the years. He's always been a stand-up first freeholder and then commissioner and has been a mentor to me, as well as to many other of our colleagues. And I do appreciate his dedication. So I have an announcement about HEART grants, which are, here in Union County, we really were on the front line with HEART grants. I don't think anybody else had this before us. But we're, the applications are opening for the 2024 HEART grants. And they're for nonprofit organizations, individual artists, and scholars. So a project can relate to local history, to the arts or humanities. The HEART name, H-E-A-R-T, stands for History Education Arts Reaching Thousands. And all of the projects funded under the program are meant to directly benefit Union County residents and increase appreciation for Union County history, the arts, and humanities. And they're a vital part of our community life. And any week of the year, you can look on your local community events listings, and you'll find some kind of event that's benefited from a HEART grant, whether it's a theatrical performance, an art show, a concert, historical presentation, loads of programs at our libraries. So it's a wide variety of activities. The activities have to take place between January 1st and December 31st of 2024 to be considered for funding. And the deadline for first-time applicants is Wednesday, October 11th of this year. And the full application has to be finished a week after that. And for more information, you can go to HEARTgrant, well, to ucnj.org, or write to email heartgrant@ucnj.org, or call our Cultural and Heritage Affairs Program at 908-558-2565. That's 908-558-2565. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Kowalski. Commissioner Baker?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let me just offer some comments here this evening to the Union County schools that were named here today. You know, the statute, the state statute basically says that all of the students are entitled to a thorough and efficient education. And I think it's highly profound. When I saw this in the Star Ledger, this article, about the rankings of some of the schools in Union County, I thought it was a very profound recognition and a tribute to Union County schools and the hard work of the students and the staff. It's, I've always been a proponent of education. And I think that the board's investment in these school systems has paid off. I think investment in education is a good thing to do. And I think it was exemplified here this evening. And that, I'm going to, I have some problems with my right ear. I'm having trouble hearing out of it. So it does something to my speaking. Sometimes I don't know if I'm speaking loud enough or not. You do hear me, don't you?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Well, that concludes my comments on that event. The County Board of Union, well, the Union County Board of County Commissioners invites seniors and their caregivers ages 60 and above to come to Union County's ASK community events in September and meet in person with professional staff for expert guidance on senior programs and resources. Help with filling out forms is also provided. And bilingual staff will be present at all of these events to offer assistance in Spanish. Staff at these ASK events can help seniors and caregivers connect with a variety of services, including home-delivered meals, respite care, home care, adult daycare, and support services for caregivers. Any Union County senior or caregiver can visit any ASK event regardless of their hometown. No appointment or pre-registration is needed. And the upcoming ASK events in September are included bilingual assistance, include bilingual assistance in Spanish. The first one is Monday, May 11th, at the Clark Public Library from 10:00 a.m. to 12:00. The second one is Wednesday, September 13th, at the Garwood Public Library from 10:00 to 12:00. The next event is Wednesday, September 20th, at Elizabeth Public Library, the main branch. And lastly, Friday, September 22nd, at Roselle Public Library from 10:00 to 12:00. The Elizabeth, excuse me, let me back up. The Elizabeth hours are from 12:00 to 2:00 p.m. and Friday to 20, on Wednesday, the 20th. Friday, September 22nd, at Roselle Public Library, 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. So for more information about the ASK events and any other services for seniors in Union County, contact the Division on Aging and Disability Resource Connection This is a toll-free line. Or visit online at ucnj.org/dhs/aging. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Those conclude my comments.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Mirabella?
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to extend a warm invitation to all residents and visitors who want to join us for our annual commemoration of the POWMI Remembrance Day. This solemn occasion will take place on the steps of the Union County Courthouse, located at Two Broad Street in Elizabeth, on Friday, September 15th, 2023, starting at 11:00 a.m. Please mark your calendars and join us. We come together to honor and remember those brave individuals, men and women, who have served as prisoners of war and who are still missing in action. It's an important opportunity for us to express our gratitude for their sacrifice and to show continued support for their families. Please join us. We look forward to your presence. We pay tribute to those heroes. Thank you. I do want to point out, hope it will not go unnoticed, that Commissioner Williams will be honored Saturday night by the LGBTQ Democratic Organization at a gala. And I'm just delighted to see that. She is a genuine trailblazer in our entire community, but particularly in the LGBT community. And I'm glad you're getting that recognition from a state organization, Commissioner. Doily deserved and re- And my wife and I will be very happy to be in attendance to see you receive your award. I'm going to spend just one minute on Mr. Patterson's comments because that's really all it's worth. I could see that he couldn't wait to attack a strong, professional woman who volunteers hundreds of hours of her own time. I can assure you, Mr. Patterson, she can take all you can give. Unfortunately, for those of us in public service, we have to put up with these kind of comments, vulgar and unprofessional, as they are, unwarranted and unnecessary. Excuse me, sir, I gave you the opportunity to speak. You can give me the opportunity to speak without interrupting you. I would only add that I would just consider the source and anything Mr. Patterson says. And I see you have now a co-pilot to help you with your message. It's very interesting, those you surround yourself with. But it's a shame that you stoop to such levels, although I shouldn't be surprised. With that, Mr. Chairman, I'll conclude my comments.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Mirabella. Commissioner Leon?
Thank you, Chairman. Union County Hispanic Heritage Month runs from September 15th to October 14th. I would like to announce this year's recipients of the 2023 Hispanic Heritage Awards, which will be presented during the first day of Union County's Hispanic Heritage Month Celebration, beginning promptly at 8:00 p.m. on September 15th at the Union County Performing Arts Center with a concert by the Hispanic, Spanish Harlem Orchestra, immediately to follow. The recipients of these awards include Alberto Goncalves, CEO and founder of Life Assets Capital, receiving the Business Leadership Award; Olga Hugo Meyer, Superintendent of Schools of Elizabeth Public Schools, recipient of the Angel Estrada Community Leadership Award; and the Hispanic Law Enforcement Association of Union County, which is receiving the Public Safety Award. To view a full list of all the events running throughout the month, please visit wwwucnj.org/hhm. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Leon. Commissioner Williams?
Thank you, Chairman. Just one thing really important. As you may know, September is National Suicide Prevention Awareness Month. And the Board of Commissioners will be hosting a free webinar for all county residents. It's titled, "Supporting Someone in Emotional Distress." And it'll be presented by caring contact's Crisis Line Director, Michelle Habayb, on Wednesday, September 13th, from 6:00 to 7:00 p.m. via Zoom. Just in terms of statistics, according to the National Alliance on Mental Illness, one in five U.S. adults experience a mental illness each year. That's 20% of the population. So this webinar will offer education, awareness, and resources on how to support someone experiencing emotional distress. And it's presented by our Department of Human Services in partnership with Caring Contact, the other organization. The Zoom link for the webinar can be accessed by registering online at www.ucnj.org/spmzoom. If you or someone you know is experiencing a mental health crisis or is having suicidal thoughts or ideation, and you need assistance, the National Suicide and Crisis Lifeline is available for free and confidential support 24/7 at, 24 hours a day, seven days a week, at 988 via text or phone. And the Lifeline is answered by trained crisis counselors and is available in multiple languages. So please be aware of this month as National Suicide Prevention Awareness Month. And you see something, say something, as they say, right? So that will conclude my comments. And I want to thank my colleagues for their support. Thank you, Commissioner Mirabella. And I'll see everybody in a couple of weeks. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Williams. Commissioner Dr. Angela Garrettson?
Okay, thank you. So I have a couple of different announcements that I would like to share, but also to recognize. So first, I want to congratulate the county school today. I work at a polytech institution, NJIT. So it's always wonderful to see so many students from Union County, but to really understand the rankings and how that really impacts NJIT, where I work actually came in number two, I believe, as the number-one public institution to go to. So the fact that there are students who are equally coming from Union County is super exciting. So I have two reasons to brag. So I'm just happy to share that. Number two, I want to also thank ROI New Jersey. They brought the People of Color Influencer out today. And very humbly, I'm very happy to be on that list. So if you haven't had a chance to see that, definitely check that out. There's a lot of amazing people, people of color on that list. And then I want to also acknowledge Soror, Soror Beebe and I of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated. Tomorrow will become our Lieutenant Governor with the very sudden and unexpected passing of Sheila Oliver. I was able to be at that funeral and represent on behalf of this board. It was a, just, it was an incredible experience to be present, but to be able to stand on her shoulders, but also be able to represent this board. But to know that Tahisha Way will be coming into that role, super very proud of her. I think she'll do an amazing job. She is the Secretary of State currently, but she was a former freeholder. So I think that she really has a lot of big shoes to fill, but she has heels. So I think she'll do a great job. And then finally, I want to just share that something, just a tidbit for county residents. There's a Household Hazardous Waste Event. Our 2023 one will be Saturday, the 9th, from 9:00 to 2:00 at Union College. So you can get all the information online. It's on our website. There's phone numbers if you so need that information. But those are my comments this evening, and thank you.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Bodak?
I'd like to begin by reminding everybody that this Monday, September 11th, marks the 22nd anniversary of the despicable terrorist attack upon our country. 273,000 people died, I'm sorry, 2,753 people died in New York City, including 343 firefighters, 184 people at the Pentagon, and 40 people aboard Flight 93, not to mention all those that have suffered as a result of illnesses caused by those attacks and the members of the military in defending our country and fighting these terrorist groups. Take a moment on Monday to reflect upon those and keep them in our prayers. The Union County Board of County Commissioners, in partnership with the Newark Bay Flycasting Club, invites residents of Union County to participate in the Fall Fishing Derby for persons with disabilities and special needs on Saturday, September 9th, at Lower Echo Lake Park in Mountainside. The Fall Fishing Derby will begin at 10:00 a.m. Participants of all ages are encouraged to bring their own poles, chairs, and fishing gear, or they can use the equipment provided. Admission to the Fall Fishing Derby is free of charge. However, we kindly request attendees to register in advance. To register, please visit www.ucnj.org/OPDSN-Register. This event is held in partnership with the Newark Bay Flycasting Club, the oldest scientific angling and casting club in the East, and is hosted by the Union County Office for Persons with Disabilities and Special Needs under the Division of Individual and Family Support Services of the Union County Department of Human Services. To find out more about special need programs hosted by Union County, or call 908-527-4807. I would also like to offer my congratulations
Oh, yes.
to Commissioner Williams on her outstanding achievement. That concludes my remarks.
Thank you, Commissioner Bodak. County Council Bergen?
I second that. Sorry.
Nothing this evening. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you very much. County Manager, what other comments, Chairman? Thank you. Vice Chairwoman, Kimberly Paul Mary Muddad?
Thank you, Chair. I feel like I have a couple of things I want to say. Congratulations, Rebecca. That is a great honor. And I wish I could join you on Saturday, but I will be there in spirit. But we are really also proud and honored to work with you. To Commissioner Mirabella, I'm not going to engage in the banter, but I do want to, and because Phyllis Mirabella is actually in the audience tonight, I do want to thank both of you for being great mentors to myself. Al, you were there when I first ran. And both of you have had, shown me a great example of how to balance work and family life. And I really appreciate all that you have provided for me and my family. So I certainly- So I certainly have learned a lot, and I know I'll continue to learn a lot from both of you. In terms of the Afro-Dominicano show, unfortunately, I did not go to that show, but I was at a few of the other concerts this summer, and they really are fantastic shows that, when you sometimes look at the name of something, like, I don't know if that's something I will have fun at, you know, I dragged my kids to a few that I thought, oh, just, guys, just come for, for a few minutes, and I had to drag them out at the end because they had so much fun. So they really are great shows, and I want to thank our Parks Department and our Public Safety Department and all of our offices that participated this summer because facilities, they're not easy to put together, but I do think that they are enjoyed by a wide variety of our residents. So I'm really proud of what we offer to our residents in the summer. And to Family Promise, I absolutely love that you guys are taking the lead in trying to make some actual change. I mean, you've done amazing things in being able to provide the shelter diversion, but now being in the forefront of actually placing people in affordable housing is really important, and it's such a growing need, and I really appreciate what you're doing in our community. So thank you for sharing that with us. We have back to school. I know a lot of kids went back to school. Mine finally did today, so I want to wish all of the students and teachers a really wonderful year. It's not easy, you know, I think last night and today are the toughest days of the year because there's so much anxiety and buildup, but we are hopefully on our way to a great year. And as Commissioner Bodak mentioned, Monday is the 22nd anniversary of ours, of the September 11th attacks. The Union County has a 9/11 memorial in Echo Lake Park in Mountainside, and we will have a uniformed armed Honor Guard standing watch at the memorial from 6:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. Residents are encouraged to bring and light candles of remembrance for those lost on September 11th. Candles will also be available at the memorial, courtesy of the Department of Parks and Recreation. And if you have never been to the memorial site in Echo Lake, it is really beautiful, and it's a special place in our county. So I know a lot of the municipalities are also hosting their own memorials throughout the day on Monday, and I hope that you can join us at one of those. And that is it for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Vice Chairwoman. I will start, before giving my regular comments, with a special announcement, especially directed to all our residents in Union County, but to National Rails, the Trails Conservancy, and Union County Connects. I was just informed by our county manager through the work of our Senate President, Nick Skatari, in the state of New Jersey, the county was awarded, it will be awarded $1 million from the NJDOT Local Transportation Projects Fund 2023 for New York connects to Union County East Coast Greenway Bike Ways Project. NJDOT Local Transportation Project Funds for 2034. Bike trails from Gothos Bridge in Elizabeth through Roselle to Cranford will connect to the East Coast Greenway. So- You guys wrote out the whole meeting, so I get some good news at the very end. Look at that. But thank you very much for all your hard work and partnering with the county on several initiatives. Thank you. And I also want to kudos the sentiments made by many commissioners in reference to Commissioner Williams, who's been a strong advocate, not only for the Union County residents, but most importantly, too, for the LGBTQ community in making sure that her voice is always heard and their voice is always heard throughout our county and union, so thank you for your leadership. And with that said, I know Commissioner Leone spoke before in reference to Hispanic Heritage Month, and if you're interested on attending one of the events during the Hispanic Heritage Month, including our flag raising September 15th at 4:45 in front of the Union County Courthouse, please visit our county website at ucnj.org/hhm for more information on upcoming events. And with that said, I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting's adjourned. Thank you very much.